Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council and a work session. It is Monday, July 8th, 2024, and ask our city recorder, please call Rol.
Counselor Cross?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Starr?
Here.
Counselor Duran?
Here.
Counselor Hesmond?
Is excused this evening for work?
Counselor Quiller?
Is excused for family?
Counselor Reed?
Is also excused for family. So, thank you for all very much, and it is a pleasure this evening to have this work session on a topic and actually a program that is very near and dear to all of our hearts, peer court. And so with that, I will turn it over to, who wants to make the introductions? Mr. Wood's going to lead off, and then we'll hear the presentation on peer court.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Tonight's work session is on the Kaiser Youth Peer Court. Just a little bit of background, Kaiser Youth Peer Court started in 2004. Peer Court established through an intergovernmental agency agreement between Marion County and the City of Kaiser. It's a unique agreement. It requires the mutual support of the Marion County Juvenile Department and the Kaiser Police Department and the Kaiser Municipal Court. So while it is between the city and the county, we have to have those underlying departments within the county and the city also be in favor of it. As far as peer court goes, we've been very blessed to have Emily Berry help us recover coming out of the COVID years. She has been with us since 2022. And with that, I guess I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Emily, and you can say a few words.
Thank you. So I'm Emily Berry for everyone that has not met me. I took over peer court in 2022 after Carrie's daughter Brooke took over for a short break. Carrie was dear to my heart, as many of you guys know her as well. With peer court, I just want to emphasize how important I believe it is for the city. I've talked with the Salem Peer Court, and it seems like Kaiser's is pretty active compared, just because right now we're having a lot of kids struggling, coming out of COVID, going back into school and understanding how to do school again. We have a lot of fighting, a lot of kids not going to school. I'm seeing more truancy cases rise as they just have decided that school's not a priority as it used to be. So with our program, if you guys aren't super familiar with it, I see a lot of first-time offenders get referred to me. I bring them in, and then they're going to be put in front of a jury of their peers. When their peers hear their story, they'll get a chance to ask them questions. These kids will ask some questions about their crime, why they did it, what led up to it, and how they've dealt with the situation since then. They will then decide sanctions for these kids. A lot of the times, it will be community service. They have to come back and sit on jury duties. Sometimes what kids will come back and sit on these jury duties for up to three months every week, coming and hearing other kids' stories. So that's a great opportunity for them to hear what is illegal, because a lot of times, too, kids really struggle knowing what can be against the law, which sounds a little silly. But I get a lot of kids that trespassing, they didn't know it was wrong to do that. A lot of kids don't know it's, you can be charged if you don't go to school, like I was saying earlier. So it's just a great opportunity to hear the other kids' stories, so they know, okay, I have a charge on my record now. I can't do these things because the police know who I am. I'm most likely, more likely to be charged with something and not, not just given a warning in the future. So it's great for them to hear that. About 85% of the kids that finish the program at this time end up volunteering when they've completed our program. So they say this was really enjoyable for me. I liked hearing other kids' stories, and I'm going to come back after school. They're choosing to do it on their own time, which is great, because a lot of these kids prior were doing things that they shouldn't have been doing after school. So when they check in, I make sure that they did go to school that day, and then they're able to sit on, as a jury member, and hear other kids' stories. So I think moving on to the next.
So the, the purpose of peer court, it's really a program of prevention and intervention for first-time youth offenders. There's quite a few objectives. We don't necessarily need to go through all of them, but it's really building the accountability, education, providing alternatives, working to repeat, repeated offenses, those kinds of things. And also letting the kids build a little bit of empathy as they see, not only from their situation, but also from the situation of someone else who may have committed a crime, so. So probably one of the questions is who can be referred to peer court? It's people between the ages of 12 and 17. They have to reside within the boundaries of the Kaiser community or go to a school that's in the Kaiser catch area. And that'd be a first-time offender. The offense has to have legal merit, so it means it's legitimate. It's not just something that got made up on them. There has to be some, some legal merit to it. For cases involving restitution, if they're a co-defendant, they don't necessarily have to live in this area, but they'll still get referred to the peer court as well. So I guess if you have a buddy that you bring along with you, they're going to, they're going to go the full distance with you. These are the types of offenses that can be referred to peer court. This is not an all-inclusive. There's a catch-all at the very end. If other offenses not listed, may be referred. So I'll turn it back over to Emily, and you can talk a little bit more about the kinds of cases that you're seeing.
Right now, like I said earlier, a lot of cases I'm seeing this year are going to be physical harassment, disorderly conduct. These are kids fighting in school. We get large groups of that at a time. Also, with summer months coming up, we'll see more kids getting MIPs. Usually this happens in groups, again, where five kids will be caught drinking together, so I see quite a few of those. And then also theft is a big issue in our area. With the, just kids going and stealing alcohol, basically, is a big one, just because they know they can't have it, so they're going to steal it. And that's usually, when we get theft cases, that's what they're stealing. So we see a lot of theft cases. As far as it's saying other offenses not listed, I always will be reached out to Marion Counties. They'll ask me, are you comfortable with this charge? I have received an assault charge, asking if I was comfortable handling that. This assault charge was a kid that assaulted his sister. It wasn't anything extreme or anything like that, so I was like, I will take that case. And he was able to learn a lot being in peer court, and it was very beneficial for him, especially the kind of kid he was, seeing other cases and how, where his life was going. So that was really important. So cases like that, I will read over the police report and see if I'm comfortable taking it. If it's a case where a kid has multiple charges and they're still referred to me, because typically it will say first-time offenders, depending on what their prior charges were, I may take them. If these prior charges were things just like staying out too late, trespassing, but if this is a kid that's continually fighting, they're not learning their lesson, that's usually when they're set up with a parole officer, and will continue them on to Marion County Juvenile. But I try to take as many cases as I can, especially those first-time offenders, because this is where I tell them, you haven't met the judge yet. I don't want you to have to meet the judge. I've spoken to the judge many times. He says, please use me as a scare tactic. So I do try to do that. I'm like, he is a nice guy, but you don't want to be familiar, so. Thank you.
The next slide is a breakdown of the charges that we've seen from 2022 when Emily took over until now. We're still putting together the 2024 numbers. We're only halfway through, but at some point, we'll be able to get a snapshot of that. So a little bit, a little bit of everything.
And just going off these numbers real quick, you can see the amount is quickly rising. When COVID started, I think Marion County wasn't referring as many to peer court, just because during COVID times, we could not do the traditional peer court. Kids were just doing one-on-one meetings with the prior coordinator. So once we opened back up normal, that's when they really started referring again, and that's why we saw those numbers rise a lot in 2023. They are still rising. In 2024, I have already gotten more cases in the first six months than I did last year's first six months, so we are seeing those go up. Unfortunately, summer brings a lot more kids into the peer court program, because they are finding themselves to have more time to get in trouble. So we'll see after the summer what our numbers are looking like. And then right here, we have our completions. I have had a prior question asking why there is more charges versus the number of completions in kids that were referred back. This is because some kids that come into our program do have multiple charges at one time. So if they were caught stealing alcohol, they'll get an MIP and a theft charge. So that's why those numbers don't quite add up. And then you'll see that great increase in our volunteer hours as well. This year, like I said, a lot of kids ended up staying to volunteer for peer court. They're given two hours every peer court session that they sit in, and then they're getting, getting volunteer hours from me for helping behind the scenes when they want to come in, help organize paperwork, things like that. They think it's fun to see the behind the scenes of what this all entails, which I think is great. And a majority of our volunteers, like I said, are kids that have done the program. We do have some kids that have reached out to me just wanting to do it for resume purposes, so we also have those kids, but a lot are program people, so.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
For, for the young people who have gone through, they've been on both sides. Do you see a difference in how they handle, you know, volunteering back, being on the juries versus the, the youth that are doing it, as you say, resume building or experience building, but they haven't been on the other side?
Yeah. And Jo and I were just actually talking about this a little bit. I see a lot of kids that finish the program, they are a lot more strict on the kids coming through. They're a lot harder on them, though, which I was very surprised about when I first started the program. I thought it'd be the kids that weren't the troublemakers that would be harder on the kids coming through, but it wasn't that way. They did their time, and so they believe that the other kids should also have to do their restitutions. So they're typically a lot harder, especially when we have a kid every once in a while come in that's not taking things seriously. They are not okay with that. They make it very clear that things need to be taken seriously. And I think that's really good for a kid that's sitting in front of all these kids, for them to say, you need to stop and take this seriously. This is important. And it's nice that a lot of these kids do know each other, just because they're able to know what kind of kids other people are and say, you know what, I don't want to be in this group anymore. I want to make better for myself. I need to make better decisions. So they separate themselves. They make friends on the jury, so that's great to see as well.
I've got a follow-up on that, because that leads to a second question. Relationships that develop through this program. One of the ideas was that positive peer pressure can help a young person make better choices, to know that there's people that they've learned to respect as their peers are watching, can encourage them, or go, hey dude, that was a really stupid idea. Can you talk about how that is increasing? I mean, '22 was shut down, '23. Do you see that rising at the same time?
I would say yes. A lot of times when kids, like an MIP, for example, we're seeing the groups drinking alcohol together. And sometimes it'll be a group of kids that's typically not in trouble, and they, their parents are like, this is very out of character, and they're all in trouble together, a big group of them. The other kids will be like, I don't want to end up doing what they're doing. So that causes that pressure of, I'm not going to go drink out this summer with my friends, because I don't want to end up back here, and next time I'm probably going to end up going to through Marion County Juvenile, having to see the judge, and that really, it scares them. So I don't want it to seem like a scary program for them, but at the same time, they are facing legal trouble. And so I remind them that pretty consistently, that I don't want them to have to go through the juvenile system when it comes to having to see the judge, getting a parole officer, and they don't want to either. So seeing those cases, the peer pressure of doing better definitely influences them a lot.
Thank you. Any questions? You have a list, okay. Did you want to start now, or?
No, I'll wait until they're, they're being done.
Oh, there we go. Went to the question slide. I got ahead of you. All right. Counsel President Starr? Okay. Counselor Cross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So how often do you meet? Is that once a week, once a month?
Once a week. In the beginning of summer is our slowest time, just because we've caught up from last summer. Over the summer is when most kids get in trouble. So the starting of fall is when I get an influx of cases. And that typically takes me to the following summer to get through all of those cases, as though ones trickle in throughout the school year as well. So the beginning of summer is when we're at our slowest. And give us two months, I'm going to get a big stack of cases that will come in, and we meet once a week, doing one case a week. At the end of summer, sometimes I'll do two to three cases in a day, try to get them quicker so that I can get them through the program as quick as possible, but it's once a week right now.
And is that something that I or someone could come in and watch, or is that closed?
Yes. Yes. You can, depending, when it, it depends on what kind of case it is. A lot of times with juveniles, we have to keep it private, just because that is the law. So it depends on what the situation is. If the parent agrees to it, I would have to talk to them, and it would also have to be a situation that I find the kid might be comfortable letting people learn, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
And then when they complete the program, is it kind of like just they're clear, because they've completed the program, so that if they were to get another MIP in a year?
So with, yeah. Yeah. So with MIPs, they have, that stays on their record till they're 18. It does not go anywhere, so that, I always remind them of that. If you get an MIP, you're stuck with it till you turn 18. With all other charges, once they complete the program, they have to wait six months from the date of when the incident occurred, and then they can file an expulsion. And then at that point, it will be basically like it didn't happen. So that's, they like to hear that. So that's why they typically like to get through the program as quick as possible within that six months, so they can file as quick as they can. If they're to get in trouble while in the program, depending on what they did, I can automatically send them for the charge they're in the program for and that charge back to Marion County. I haven't had to do that. I haven't had any kids get in trouble while doing the program.
Thank you.
Of course. Counsel President Starr?
I have a list.
Okay.
So I will just start. Where are the parents during their case or their peer court?
So the parents for the kid that is coming for his or her session, the parents are welcome to come. A lot of times, the parents will sit next to their kid while they're being questioned, and the parents are also able to make a statement if they would like to, and they're also able to be asked questions if they would like to as well. Typically, the parents are very involved. Every once in a while, we'll have a parent that doesn't want to be involved, and they just want to sign the paperwork and take a step back and make their kid handle it all. But they are able to be as part of it as they would like to be.
Follow, or?
Can I keep going?
Yep. Just, I'll just go down your list.
Go down the list, yes.
When you see the program, what does that mean?
So the peer court program.
Right. But what is that?
So basically, the fact, it starts at our intake. I'm given a list of kids that have committed offenses. I send out a letter to them saying, this is when your intake is. This is an, and I always remind them, this is an optional program for them. They do not have to do peer court. If they choose not to do it, they're going to be sent back to Marion County Juvenile, and usually municipal will take over from there. Every once in a while, when I have a kid go decide they don't want to do it, they go through municipal, the judge contacts me and says, I got a kid, that would be great. And I'm like, yeah, they decided to not even show up for their intake. And they're like, okay, well, I'm going to force them to do peer court now. So sometimes it wraps around that way. Typically, if they come to the intake meeting, they will choose to do peer court. So they're given a date where they have to come in and sit, they sit in the chair right here, and that's when all the kids hear their police report, the same one that I give, I read to them. So the, a lot of times, parents don't know the whole story until that intake meeting, where I gave them the police report. Sometimes I have parents that have no idea what they're even there for, because the kid's like, I don't remember getting in trouble. So it's good for them to hear the full police report, and they're able to ask me questions about it and things like that. And a lot of times, they can, a lot of times, it happens at McNary a lot. So they are able to go to school, the school, and ask some questions about the incident if they were not contacted about it. And then at that time is when they're questioned. After, they're given their community service hours. They all have to complete homework packets for being in our program. They're given a due date. The kids decide how long they're going to be given to complete everything by, and that just depends on how much they're given. So how much homework they're given, how many community service hours they need to complete, and how many jury duties they need to complete. So some kids are quick, only have to come for a month, four times, not very many community service, depending on what it is. Some kids are in our program up to six months.
So on the, like what their, the consequences, is there a framework or some kind of a rubric that the juries use?
Yeah.
So that kind of like crimes are given like consequences?
Yes. So for just a basic charge, they're going to be, they all start with three hours of community service, one jury duty, and a homework packet. MIPs start with eight hours of community service, your homework packet, drug and alcohol education on top of that, and then it goes up from there. Typically, kids aren't given the minimum. So that's just, they come in, I tell them, you're going to have to complete this. You can get it started now. A lot of kids will go ahead and finish it, finish that before they even see the other kids, so that, that, they don't have to worry about doing that, and then we go from there. The kids are really good at not being easy on them. So if a kid comes in with multiple charges, that doubles, the minimum doubles. So if they have two charges, they automatically have to do the minimum for each charge.
Are those consequences evidence-informed?
Yes. So the, the people that set it up, peer court is a program all over the country. They have looked into it and seen what works best. I think the most important thing is honestly the homework packet. A lot of, the homework packet is just going over all of the different crimes most committed by juveniles, especially in our area. They have to read a lot about it, answer a lot of questions about them, write short essays, and I have kids turn these in and tell me, I didn't know half of these I could even get in trouble for. Like I stated earlier, they don't know they can actually be charged for not going to school. A lot of them aren't realizing that, what time curfew is. And I see a lot of parents also tell me, I didn't realize my kid legally had to be in, which I was very surprised about as well. So I think it's very important that homework is done, just because they don't, if they don't know how they can get in trouble, they're just going to continue getting in trouble.
So you kind of, you alluded to my next question, which were people not knowing things. Are you tracking trends, and then what are we doing as a community? If we're having peer court, I think it's, I think that's, it's a great program, but then what? So if we're seeing trends of parents not knowing what the curfews are, kids not knowing that they can get in trouble for school, are we doing anything like, I don't know, TikTok, like some kind of educational outreach to make sure that they are informed? And it's a, what, I guess, I appreciate the kids having consequences for not going to school or missing curfew. And I'm probably going to make a lot of enemies here, but what about the parents?
Yeah.
Are the parents required to do a homework packet and community service? I mean, I'm just asking, what is the consequence for that?
Yeah. I completely agree with you. A lot of times with the parents, I can tell right away how involved the parent is going to be as soon as the intake meeting comes, depending on how many questions they're asking. And again, those, a lot of times, parents don't know things. I encourage them to always read over. In our intake meetings, we go over together the crimes most committed, so that they are able to see that as well. I think that's a great idea to start outreach. Peer Court does have a social media Facebook page, so I can begin sharing on those. I also think it'd be a great idea this upcoming school year to maybe go to McNary, especially. They have a trespass order in place, so kids can automatically, if police catch them there, charge them with trespassing. I haven't found any kids that are, that know of this. And I always tell them, even if they're not in our program for trespassing or anything close to that, I always remind them, there's no reason for them to be hanging out at the schools past school hours if they're not there for an after-school program, a sporting event, or anything like that. And that usually passes that along fairly quickly. And we always share with the kids that are here volunteering as well. We do a little at the end of things, okay, remember, guys, this is what they've gotten trouble for. This is what it could lead to, just reminding them consistently, so that they can maybe spread that information. But I think sharing that on social media is a great idea for kids. I will. Sorry?
Okay. Okay. I got to figure out where to put my finger, so I don't.
So just a follow-up to that one real quick, we've cut four, I forget. So is there a packet from those crimes going along with, Counselor President Starr just said that we could share with parents or with neighborhood associations or with Boys and Girls Clubs or YMCA's?
Yeah, the, our.
That you could share with us?
Yeah, our homework packet, I think, is a great resource that can be shared. And I can share the pages on our social media and just let them know, please read these over. These are going to show you in detail all of the crimes that are most committed. As a parent, you should make yourself familiar, especially going into the summer, making sure you know where your kids are, what they're doing, and that they can actually face legal trouble for these things. Because we had a giant group of kids walking train tracks last year. They weren't doing anything wrong but walking train tracks. Every single one of them got charged with trespassing. Every parent I saw for that case said, I had no idea they could even get in trouble for this. So things like that. I think that's important.
Yeah. Totally love that, and then we can also push out on, on social media as well to broaden the, the reach. Counsel President Starr, do you want to continue?
Thank you. My final question, we'll circle back on why I'm so passionate about this issue. So there's light at the end of the tunnel. Age breakdown. So it's 12 to 17, but I noticed that we just have numbers of offenses. I'm curious about the age brackets, because I'm wondering, I heard you say going to McNary, which I think is great, but I'm also wondering if we're starting at the age of 12, why wouldn't we go to the middle schools, like maybe during the registration period? Or, you know, some, some place to start talking to them at a younger age?
Yeah, that's a great idea. I say McNary just because a majority of these incidents are occurring once they get to high school. I don't have very many middle schoolers coming through our program every once in a while. Most of our middle schoolers are just going to be volunteers. Every once in a while, I do have one, but they're pretty consistently, I would say, beginning of high school is when that really starts.
Maybe eighth grade?
Yeah, eighth grade, when they're about to. Those packets they get when they're going to head to McNary or high school, those head jumpstart packets, including something like that, saying, hey, this is what's coming up. Keep yourself out of trouble.
Only a couple, only one more page of questions. I heard you say you're still gathering 2024 data. Do we do that on a quarterly basis? Or how do we report out that data? I mean, I always had to report out on a quarterly basis, so just curious.
Right now, it's just as needed, so we don't have a formal period, at least not within the city. I don't know with respect to reporting to the county.
I do have, so far, the amount of cases we've had. We've only had 12 cases so far this year that have come in for 2024. The first couple of months of this year, we had cases, but they occurred in 2023. It takes a while, once the case occurred from Marion County, to even decide what they're going to do with that case, and then forward it to me. So I go by the date of when the incident occurred for that information. So if it occurred in 2023, it's going to be in our 2023 information, even if I don't receive that kid until February 2024.
So just to make sure that I understand the process. So high schooler truancy gets cited by Kaiser Police? And then that's then referred to juvenile. Juvenile then calls you to see if you want to take the case?
Yes.
And then it may or may not go to muni court, and then the judge may kick it back to you. And so six months later, you're hearing the case.
Exactly. It takes a very long time, which I don't love, because the kids are irritated by that, which I understand. They're like, this happened so long ago, I don't remember. So it would be great if Kaiser Police directly referred them to me, which they are able to do. I have gotten a couple of those, but they don't do it very often. Every once in a while, they will. It'd be nice if they did do it more often. But typically, they will forward it first to Marion County Juvenile, and then they send it to me.
Do we know why that is?
No, but I can find out.
Thank you. Last page. I mean, no, I don't promise. Let's see. My glasses. Um, let's see, my glasses on. So, uh, let's see, what's recidivism rate?
Right now, since 2022, we have only had one kid reoffend since completing the program, which in my opinion is great. This kid did come to me directly after getting in trouble, before I even found out that he.
But that's the non, is that the non-compliant?
Non.
On the data? Because how would you know if, if it's a person that's been through your program? Right? So high, using the same example.
Yeah.
High school, high schooler truancy, Kaiser Police cites it, goes, right, we bounced around, it ends with you. Three, let's just say, three months later, they magically got through the Peer Court process in three months as you're awesome and figured out a way to cut that timeframe down. High schooler is truant again, Kaiser Police cites, and then it goes to juvenile. Is juvenile, how would you know that that youth reoffended?
I have access to the system, so I go back and check the kids. Like every, I would say about every six months, I go and check the kids from the year prior. Before coming in, I checked all of them because I was asked the rate of that.
Yeah.
So only one kid popped up who completed the program, which I was aware of it because he came to me as soon as he got in trouble saying, I messed up, they're not going to let me do the program probably again, which they didn't. But he was able to use Peer Court for his community service hours because he had to do community service through Marion County for Marion County Juvenile. So he used our program in that way. But I thought it was just a great thing that he came directly to me once he got in trouble and saying,
Yeah, that's impressive.
I'm sorry that I did this.
Why do you only do one case per week?
Just because of the time frame that we have. Middle schoolers don't get out of school till really late, so I have to have them have time to even walk here. A lot of them walk here. So we don't, we can't get started until 4:30 at the earliest. So that's typically why.
So speaking of, um, diversion, have, do, are, are there opportunities for the kids to have, to meet, shall we say, experienced adult, former adult offenders?
We don't have anything like that set up now, but that's definitely something I can look into.
Oh, you should meet, you should meet Hank.
Okay.
Yeah, you should meet Hank. And my final question is, do you know if there is an Oregon statute that allows for CASA volunteers to be assigned to youth in juvenile delinquency proceedings at adjudication? Do you utilize that or is that an opportunity?
Um, I would utilize that. I did, I was not aware that that was something that was accessible for us. So that's definitely something to be interested. And right now, I was starting to begin working on looking for attorneys that would be poss, or judges that'd be possibly interested in volunteering for our program. Because I have heard from other Peer Court programs that they use those kind of people on their juries to help add in that little scare factor. So.
Have you also met Paige?
I have not.
Okay, so we are going to have to have a little, like.
Get together.
Yes.
Okay.
So and just introduce you to people and just have some brainstorming because I think that statute on CASA at adjudication
Yeah.
would be great.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you.
I'm done for now.
Good ideas. Counselor Cross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you, is it Kaiser Youth Peer Court? When I was looking at the Facebook page, is that your Facebook page?
Yes.
Okay, well, because I just want to make sure it was the right one because there's a posting from like a month ago and then before that, that's like three years ago or two years ago.
Yes, I was, I was just finally given access to the Facebook page.
Okay, great. And I was wondering if you could just maybe email that homework packet to Melissa and then if she could give it to us?
Yeah, definitely.
That way we could just get the PDA for that?
Yes.
And do the homework.
And yeah, and the homework. I mean, I just think there's a lot of opportunities to hand that out,
Yeah, definitely.
whether it's community dinner or whatnot. Oh, I know. And then, Adam, if you could find out when you talk to Copeland or Heinz or whomever about, I would love to know how many tickets we're giving to the juveniles in the community and how, like, what percentage are, would even qualify for this program? Because it could be that they're just recurring offenders and a big majority don't qualify. Or it could be a big majority qualify.
I find that, I think Marion County Juvenile tries to send as many kids to me as possible, even if they're reoccurring. You'll see if I'll take them. But I think they go to me first before turning them over to municipal.
Yeah, I just think that'd be interesting as we're delving into this to know.
Sure.
Well, and following up on that, I think that it really speaks to that opportunity for that, for our youth to think things through, have these experiences, and be set up to make better choices and not have to carry these into, you know, when they're 18 and so forth. They also, one of my friends, her daughter was, ended up on both sides and absolutely loved the program. She learned a ton. She was really excited to be able to then turn around and give back to the youth coming after her and be able to have those conversations going, this is what I learned and this, and be able to share that. So we learn by experiencing, but we also learn by teaching. And I think that's one of the strengths for the students, the youth coming back and serving on the juries. They are now passing it on. And it really embeds it, based on my experience with some of the young people who have gone through it, embeds it in their minds and, and their awareness of like, no, I know that's not going, that's not going to fly, got in trouble for that, and yes, a real thing.
Yes, thank you. I completely agree.
Any other questions? Mr. Brown?
Yes. Counselor President Starr, could you tell me a little bit more about your question about how the CASA volunteer would work out? I didn't.
Yeah, so it's, um, it's a really obscure, and I was just looking it up because it's been two years since I've been at the local level. But I think it's, um, I'd, so I was trying to find it. But it's a really obscure one-line statement in statute that allows for a CASA volunteer to be appointed at adjudication of juvenile delinquency cases. So prior to the pandemic, we, because you know, the pandemic ruined everything for a while. We were in the process of doing a pilot project of what that would look like to assign. And not every state has that in statute. But it's nuanced, right? Because you have attorneys that don't want people reporting on their clients, right? Because it's at adjudication. So what is going to happen if the youth, you know, discloses to the CASA that, oh, I, you know, smoked pot again or I, you know, whatever? And then does that mean that the CASA then has to turn in the youth? Or are we, so there was a lot of those conversations. And we probably had, we had everybody from OIA, the judges, juvenile attorneys, the DA's office, were all around the table having these conversations about what that could look like. Because you can do it in Oregon, but there's, it's, I think, for the criminal side of juvenile proceedings, it was, there were some dicey aspects to it of what that, what that could look like in maintaining attorney-client privilege. But my thought is, on the Peer Court side of it, right? You're not there yet. And to the, to the true criminal side where you're represented by an attorney, right? So that's where I was asking, kind of building up the questions of, you know, where are the parents? What's the involvement? Like, you know, that kind of thing. What would that look like to explore utilizing that in? And I just want to be clear and go on the record, I have no authority over the local program. I just know it's an opportunity in Oregon, it is in statute. So just curious about what that might look like for some of the kids who may need some extra support.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's a great idea. Like you were saying, making sure that if a kid was to come to them and say something, they wouldn't have to tell anyone. Because it is a big thing for the kids. I always remind them, I'm not a mandated reporter for them. They're able to come to me whenever they need to, and I'm not going to get them in any more trouble. We're going to talk through any problems. And also, if they come in our courtroom and they're discussing their case, I want them to be completely honest with me. And I always remind them, you cannot face any additional charges in this room based on this charge from me or any of our jury members. It is not a real court system. So that's a big thing for them. So just making sure that they can't get in more trouble is
Right.
very important.
419C is the chapter, I'll, I think, so I'll look it up.
I was just more interested in how it works. So you invite a CASA volunteer to the hearing and then have them.
Oh, there, oh, let me back up. It's in statute, there is no program, there is no formal structure, there is nothing. At the national level, we're looking at what that could look like in states that allow it. We, at the local level, and I think we started in 20, fall of 2019, literally like we had six months before the pandemic shut it down. But we were looking at, what would that look like? We were literally like drawing the program all together.
Sounds like an opportunity.
Yeah.
All right. Any additional questions, comments? All right, well, thank you very much. This has been very informative. Looking forward to the social media now that you have access. And many of us who have been through that process of trying to get control of social media, we've had that conversation with our neighbor associations and other organizations. That is no small feat to get control. As that begins to come forward, if you would communicate with Ms. Bissett on opportunities for linking and sharing information for our youth and our families. And I love the idea of the neighbor associations as another conduit because these are the neighbors that are watching out for the kids in their neighborhoods and can be very helpful allies as well. So if we think of more opportunities for sharing, I know that we have, we can do that through our media. And as you think of things, how we can be supportive, would you please come, you can come any council meeting, I mean, any, just sign in at the beginning, you're near the top of the list. You don't have to sit there for three public hearings and a partridge in a pear tree. So be at the top to be able to give an up, quick update, how's it going? Here's an opportunity to get involved. We would love to hear anegys broadcast. So our council meetings go out on television and audio. So if you come and give those reports, more of the community will be able to hear what you're doing. And it will spur, I think, even additional conversations.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah. So First and Third Mondays, 7 o'clock, anytime that you feel it'd be an opportunity.
Perfect.
All right. Yeah, thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work. Anything further? All right, the time is 6:45. We are adjourned. Thank you so much. All right. The time is 6:45. We are adjourned. Thank you so much.